Hi, good evening everyone and welcome to the February 12th, 2020, meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. The board has been in executive session since 5:30, discussing the employment history of particular persons, seeking advice of counsel, discussing potential litigation and real estate contracts. Can I have a motion to resume the general meeting at 7:33?
I move.
A second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Holly, normally we would have the Pledge of Allegiance by Holly McCall, and she has a special request.
So I was hoping that our friends from Roaring Brook could stand up and help us all with the pledge.
Alright. Start them off?
Okay.
Go ahead. Ready kids, come on. Thank you, nicely done. Okay, I know we have a lot to get to tonight. I will start with the president's report and we'll move through this as quickly as we can. I did want to mention that for those of you who read Lo-Hud today, there is an article about female superintendents, featuring our very own Dr. Christine Ackerman. It really addresses the fact that superintendents are overwhelmingly male and it speaks very favorably about Christine, which we're very happy about. So I just wanted to mention that. It's a very good read, so any of you who want to go home after and check out Lo-Hud, that would be great. Also, last night I attended the Sports Boosters meeting and I want to remind everyone that registration is now open for the spring sports at the middle school and high school level. Registration does end on February 22nd, so make sure that you register your students in a timely fashion. I'd also like to mention, while I can't go into details of all the sporting things that have been going on here recently, our winter sports teams have completed their regular seasons and we've had some really tremendous postseason results with our ski team, our swimming, I think they're section champs, league champs in basketball, and those playoffs will start very shortly on the 22nd, I believe. So if you want to get some good positivity regarding our student athletes, you can check out the Twitter feeds from our athletic director Jason Simo and the Sports Boosters. I just wanted to send everyone there and congratulate our winter athletes. Also, I know Adam will be addressing this in the superintendent's report, but in our consent agenda tonight, we will be approving, or hopefully approving, a number of grants from the Chappaqua School Foundation. So I just wanted, on behalf of the board, again to thank CSF for their generous role in supporting our schools, our programs, and we'll hear more about that later this evening. Also, tomorrow, myself, several board members, Christine, and I believe Andrew Corsilia will be attending a workshop through the West Putt School Boards Association on school start times. I know that's a topic that we've discussed over the years. I know we've discussed it with the PTA. They are running a workshop on that, so we are going to get some more information that we will be happy to share with you post-vacation break.
And being that I'm president of the association, I promise you that I will be there as well. And a lot of planning went into that. And I just want to mention that school start time has been an issue, perennial issue that comes up in communities, and it's very important that we look at it on a regional level. So that's why we've put the program together and so we will come back afterwards.
Right, so we're looking forward to sharing that information. We're very happy that the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association is running that workshop tomorrow. I think it's going to be great. And lastly, before, I wish everyone a restful and restorative February break next year, or next year, next week, next year. Vicky, Holly, and Hillary attended the New York State School Boards Association 2020 Capitol Conference in Albany this past Sunday and Monday. And I would just like to conclude the president's report by handing it off to them so they can talk a little bit and give a summary of their activities there. So thank you.
So it was very comprehensive and I'm going to try to be as quick as I can because we have a long agenda. But the New York State School Boards Association held a Capitol Conference, which they do every year, really to discuss the governor's budget as it affects elementary and secondary school education. So I'll give you a quick outline of the two-day conference. So we had initially a very good synopsis of all of the state issues relating to government by NISBA's Governmental Relations Team, led by Brian Fessler, who did an excellent job. We had a speaker come from the Office of the Governor, the Deputy Secretary for Education. We also heard from the SCD, State Education Department's interim commissioner, Shannon Tahoe. And we heard from reporters who normally cover Albany. We had a reporter's roundtable with representatives from the Time Union, Politico, Bloomberg, and the Capitol Press Room. We later on also heard from our Senator and Chair of the Education Committee, Shelley Meyer, Mayor, who was a speaker at our dinner. And the following day, we heard from a young student, I'm sorry, a young lady who is a senior at the William Floyd Union Free School District, who gave us a wonderful presentation on mental health issues in students, and it was very compelling. And following that, we had appointments with our legislators. So we were a group of about 15 from the Westchester Putnam area. We spread it around. We saw Sandy Galiff, Tom Abenanti, Susan Serino, Peter Harkum, Michael Benedetto, David Buckwald, David Carlucci, and Andrea Stewart-Cousins, who is Majority Leader. In some cases, we met with their office staff as well. The issues that we covered, and I'm not going to go into these issues in depth, will take some time one day to do that. But we went over issues of foundation aid, which is the basic operating aid that every school gets. Basically requesting for full funding of foundation aid. This year, we got a very small increase, a 0.25 increase for Chappaqua and many of our districts, 70% of our Westchester Putnam districts, got a 0.25% increase, which is very low. 504 million was the increase. The big story this year is that the governor decided to fold in 10 expense-based aids into foundation aid, which is really quite outrageous, which artificially inflated the increase. Expense-based aid is usage-based, whereas foundation aid is needs-based. So it confused the issue and renders the formula and state aid much less transparent and much less predictable. There was also proposal to reduce building reimbursement rates by lowering the ratio, which would make it more difficult to predict what we would get back from building aid and difficult to put out a bond propositions. There was a proposed reduction to transportation aid regarding capping the aid and eliminating an aid ratio based on enrollment and CPI. Transportation is mandated. We can't decide not to transport kids. The CPI and enrollment has nothing to do with expenses. It has to do with perhaps some students needing to be placed out of district and transported. So that would be a very difficult proposition. There was a proposal to eliminate the state's 18.42 share for residential placement, putting further burden on taxpayers. We talked about the tax levy cap, perhaps switching over to a growth factor of 2%. There were some bills regarding special-act school districts, which I will skip for now, but it's an important issue. Special acts provide services to the most fragile of students in our state and they are woefully underfunded. We asked that, on the polling place, we asked that schools be allowed the right of refusal, the same as other public buildings, to be designated as a polling location, especially considering the fact that there's early voting and we want our schools to be safe places. And revise the time off for voting. We also asked for additional resources for social-emotional health and school safety and security measures. We also talked about vaping and e-cigarette issues. And so that is a very quick outline of all of the issues we discussed with our legislators. And you know, for whoever's interested, we may set up a workshop or maybe a work session one day to discuss these issues in depth. Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
I'd just like to add one thing, which is that here in Chappaqua, we're very fortunate to have legislators that understand the needs of the public schools and are very supportive, but they do still need to hear our voices. So I hope that anyone who's got any interest in knowing more reaches out or attends a future presentations.
Yeah, we'll be getting voter voice letters from the Lower Hudson Education Coalition, which we can pass on to our PTA for anyone interested. You can read up on it and maybe, you know, sign up and look at the letters. And if you are persuaded, you know, please just sign on and send them to your legislators.
Okay, so the superintendent report will begin with Ms. O'Leary and the Roaring Brook faculty and our students. So we're really excited to have you here tonight. There's a lot going on on the table and on the floor, so we're looking forward to what's about to happen here.
Thank you. We are so excited to be here tonight. I want to start by thanking the board for this invitation to be here and especially I want to thank the Roaring Brook parents who have come tonight and brought their children. But of course, I am especially grateful to the children who are going to be sharing with you tonight some of the most important curriculum work that we are doing this year, both of which are a little bit new. Our first graders are going to be sharing with you our Phonics First program, which we have just started this year. And our fourth graders are going to be talking about social-emotional learning, some of which they've been doing for many years, but some of which the Ruler Program is just beginning this year. We are going to begin with our first grade team. And in fact, all of our first grade teachers are here tonight. I'd like to introduce them. They are Mrs. Everett, Mrs. Keeler, Mrs. Mahoney, and Mrs. Mickey. Also, our assistant principal, Mr. Cooper, is here tonight. He helped with the presentation slides and videos, and I want to thank him for his work on that. And we will begin our Phonics First presentation with Mrs. Keeler and our students. So students, first graders, come on up.
So I want to introduce Ellen and Bobby. They're going to model for you our auditory drill, part of our three-part drill that we do each day.
The teacher says, "A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, Z." Fingers up, ready, go.
A, I.
Fingers up, E, ready, go.
I, N, G, A.
Fingers up, O, ready, go.
O, I.
Fingers up, two ways to spell "I," ready, go.
I, I.
Y, Y.
Thank you, Ellen and Bobby. You guys have a whole baggie, too. You're welcome.
I know. Thank you. We can share. Yeah, we can share.
We even, Holly, are going to show you our blending drills.
We use our blending force to say each sound. Then we blend our sounds together to read a word. Fingers up, ready, read. H, H, F, F. Fingers up, ready, read. H, H, F, F. Fingers up, ready, read. H, H, F, F. Fingers up, ready, read. S, S, O, O. Fingers up, ready, read. S, S, X, X. Fingers up, ready, read. R, R, W, W.
And we have Eleanor and Eli are going to do our short vowel and contact.
We practice with me to the different sounds of "S." Check out the A and I. Ready, cap. Ready, flip. Ready, strap. Ready, vent. Ready, front. Ready, lock.
And finally, we have Brianna then. They're going to explain what red words are and more depth.
Red words are words that don't follow samples. They tell us to stop and memorize the words. We go to the red word in the alphabet and then they don't follow by the pattern.
Arms up, ready, flip.
F, F, R, O, F.
Arms up, ready, go.
What, W, H, A, T, what.
Arms up, ready, go. O.
O, O, F, O.
Arms up, ready, go. R.
R, A, R, C, R.
Here we go.
Arms up, flip, ready, cap.
Flip, F, F.
Arms up, chop, ready, cap.
Chop, C, C.
So I think now we have just a quick video to hear some ways that first graders think that Phonics First helps them to read and write.
So how has Phonics First helped you to become better readers and better spellers?
Because it helps us pronounce red words and help us spell words better that we don't know how to spell and read tricky words.
Awesome. Anything else? Smile, thank you. So tell me how Phonics First has helped you to become better readers and better spellers? Yes?
It helped us because we sounded out the words with letters because we know all the sounds because our teachers helped us learn them. We know all kinds of blends, right Sophie?
Yeah. I think Phonics has helped me become a better speller and writer because Mrs. Keeler does a lot of drills with us and those drills help us when we're having trouble and we do workshop and write.
Great job. Thank you so much for sharing. Say goodbye.
Bye-bye.
So tell me how Phonics First is helping you to become better readers and better spellers?
So when you get, when you do phonics, it helps you sound out words and you could use those words to help you and use the strategies. You help you sound out the words to help you sound out the words when you're reading.
When you're reading and maybe also when you're...
Yeah. Spelling.
Spelling. And also maybe when you're...
Writing.
Writing, beautiful. Anything else we want to add?
When you're doing phonics in your classroom, you would write it on your palm. On one of the stations, you write it on your palm, in the air, on the floor, or in your palm.
I already said that wrong.
Yeah. Or...
Alright, sounds good.
I forgot.
Okay, cool. Thanks, guys. Say goodbye.
Bye.
So tell me how Phonics First has helped you to become better readers and better writers?
When I was so young, she hold up the stick. We do it and we practice once and we also learn, like, we get new tools and we do it, we practice it every day. And we have words that we practice a lot, so we can be so...
What do you call the words? What... There you go.
Red words and we're the words.
Awesome. Alright, thank you very much for sharing. Say goodbye.
Bye.
Bye.
So I know that the board would probably like to ask our first graders some questions, if that's okay? So if you guys could just turn around and face the board so that...
The people.
Over here. Okay.
People on the table.
Okay, great. First of all, let me start by saying that was amazing. I mean, so wonderful. Go ahead. Do you guys look forward to this part of your day when you do phonics?
Yeah.
Is it like one of the most fun parts? Because it looks really, really fun.
Yeah.
What do you guys think is, and you may all have different answers, what do you think is the most helpful of the different activities that you do with the sounds?
Because you can make them in your words to write and read. You like, you can help test out.
Yes, go ahead.
Sound out the words, though. We can try to read the words.
Do you have any other activities? Are these the only activities you do?
These are the only ones.
I think the most helpful one of them is writing on, I'm writing on our boards.
So I just want to tell you that a long time ago, when my son was your age, I would do this with him at the beach. Could you believe that the schools didn't do this in the classroom? So we would do it when we were at the beach because someone told me that was a great way to learn. And now you get to do it in the classroom, too. Yeah.
So did you write in the sand?
I did. I wrote in the sand with him and it helped him a lot. And so I'm so glad that you're doing it here today. And it looks like so much fun and I hope that it makes reading and writing something that is easier and more fun and more meaningful to you.
One else?
I'm just jealous that I didn't get to do that in school myself.
So before we call up our fourth graders, I just would like to thank our first grade team and our first graders. That was such a comprehensive overview of the phonics program. I quickly didn't ask for a better demonstration. So thank you very much. And we'd like our fourth graders to please come up. And then, once we're done with our fourth grade students, that's when we'll transition and usually that's when all our families head out for the night. So if our fourth grade students could come up, that would be great.
Excellent.
You guys can leave that on the floor. Because we'll have a break. We'll have a break before we do the next presentation.
So at this time, it's my pleasure to introduce our fourth grade students and their teacher, Ms. Tootsah, who are going to be talking to you about our social-emotional learning curriculum. Ms. Tootsah?
Good evening, everyone. It is my honor and privilege to present Trey, Maggie, Laura, Helen, Gabe, and Sam. They'll be talking to you about social-emotional learning and how it can help us be the very best we can be.
Mindful breathing, what is mindful breathing? Mindful breathing is a tool that helps us to calm down by putting our attention on our breath. How do we use it? When we feel worried, upset, or angry, the amygdala part of our brain becomes active. These strong emotions sometimes keep us from thinking clearly because the oxygen goes to our arms and legs. Mindful breathing helps send the oxygen back to our prefrontal cortex so we can make wise choices.
How does mindful breathing help us with our... Scientists who study the brain have found that mindful breathing strengthens the prefrontal cortex, which helps us to solve problems, problem solve, and problem solve. At school, we use mindful breathing whenever we need to sit down or...
Become calm, working, clearly. We also use it when we're troubled, fawnless.
We would like to invite you to try mindful breathing now.
Sit down in a comfortable position. Close your eyes or look down at your hands. Pay attention to your breathing. Take calm, slow breaths. Gently breathe in through your nose, then let go of each breath. Keep your shoulders relaxed.
Picture the air coming into your body and going out again. If your mind starts to think about other things, bring your attention back to your breath. Feel your stomach rising and falling. Keep your belly soft and relaxed. Open your eyes slowly and take another slow, deep breath with your eyes open.
Thank you for doing mindful breathing.
What is a growth mindset? A growth mindset is a way of thinking about our abilities and intelligence. Scientists have found that we can actually train our brain to make us stronger and smarter. People with a growth mindset often show these traits: empathy, flexibility, optimism, persistence, and resilience. How do we use a growth mindset? We recognize which traits in ourselves we already use and which traits we'd like to strengthen. We also notice these traits when we think about characters in our reading and writing and when we study real life people who are successful.
How does it help us with our learning? We use a growth mindset whenever we're stuck on a challenging problem, a tricky assignment, or when we're faced with an uncomfortable new situation. Instead of quitting or giving up, we take some deep breaths and say to ourselves, you can do this, or I'll keep trying, or maybe I should try a different way. We also know that by recognizing and correcting mistakes, the neuron connections in our brain get stronger and they multiply. It's especially important to remember that when we fail, it's just our first attempt in learning.
This is what a fixed mindset would sound like. Why am I doing this? There's no point in doing it. I cannot do this. This is what a growth mindset would sound like. Maybe I can try and get it right. I can do this. I got it.
What is a the charter? The charter is a promise we make to each other about how we want to feel at school and what we will do to make sure we have those feelings most of the time. We all agree to the charter and sign our names to it. How do we use the charter? We bring some ideas about how we want to feel in our classroom, then decide together which behaviors everyone in the class can do to make sure that everyone is feeling this way. For example, our class decided that we all want to feel safe, respected, calm, motivated, and kind. An example of an action we can take for everyone to feel respected is when you see someone who doesn't look well, ask them, are you feeling okay? How does the charter help us with our learning? When we feel sick, calm, motivated, and respected, we can concentrate into our best learning.
What is a mood meter? The mood meter is a tool that helps us figure out how we are feeling and how we can share that information with others. We all have a lot of details throughout, we all have a lot of feelings throughout the day. They can be pleasant, unpleasant, high energy, low energy. How do we use it? We use a mood meter to help us understand our own and other people's emotions, what causes them and what their consequences are. Once we have identified how we are feeling, we can use strategies to move our feelings back to the green zone, which is pleasant, low energy. Some strategies are positive self-talk, take a movement break, think of a special place, write in your feelings journal, or talk to someone about your feelings. How does a mood meter how does a mood meter help us with our learning? When we're feeling relaxed, calm, and content in the green zone and using our prefrontal cortex, we're able to pay attention and focus on our learning instead of being distracted or thinking about unpleasant feelings.
Are you ready for questions? Okay.
So first thing is I'm not sure we could do this, but I think we should do mindful breathing before every meeting. I think that's so relaxing, you know, a lot of people do meditation. It's almost very meditative. And the question is, how do you use a mood meter? Do you have like little post-its you stick on it or you just look at it?
Um, so we have all these different feelings so like it tells you like so on the picture it has all these different words of how you can feel like you can be near the blue zone and the green zone or the yellow zone and the green zone. So it's kind of, it shows you what like what word you're feeling.
Do you use that every day?
Um, not really, but it can really help us.
Thank you.
Um, so what the colors mean is um green means like calm and relaxed, um yellow means like really excited, high energy, um and blue means lonely, uh kind of sad, and red means like really mad and um and you have you're like really angry.
And you use it every day?
What?
Do you use it?
Um, sometimes, yeah. Um, and the darker the colors, um like there's like light green and then darker green, the more you're into the mood.
Thank you.
Now, sometimes when you find yourself in a bad area on the mood meter, do you use your mindful breathing? Do you find yourself doing that at times and that it it helps you get to a a better color on the chart?
Yes, because when you use mindful breathing, it calms everything down and it helps you focus more so that everything that you thought about before is now settling down and you feel much better.
And to add on to what Maggie said is like when you're all mad and your brain is thinking about a lot of things, when you do mindful breathing, it's like a snow globe and the snowflakes calming like going down to the bottom of the snow globe.
That's such a great way to explain that. Thank you so much. So I have a I have a question for you. So when when you get a chance to think about how you're feeling and you get a chance to talk about it and share it, whether you're feeling really excited or sad or upset or even very happy, um does it make it easier for you to then pay attention after you get a chance to talk and think about it? Does it make it easier for you to pay attention to what's going on in the classroom and to do your work? Do you find that it makes a big difference?
Yeah, after you get mindful breathing, it's easier to do your work so you can focus on that.
Add on to what Trey said, what we we do mindful breathing after recess because after recess we're full of exciting kind of thoughts. And we want to calm down those thoughts down.
Yeah. It's a good idea. Yes, excellent. Makes sense. Yes.
I just want, this isn't really a question so much as just saying I think this this is great that you guys have all learned to do this while still in elementary school because I only first encountered mindful breathing much older when I was in law school, but it is a really useful skill and one that I hope you guys will take with you because it will come in handy throughout your lives.
Add on to Trey and Rob, so af- um so when we're in the yellow zone, it feels way better when you do the mindful breathing and you just quietly sit there for a moment and breathe and then you'll be like, okay, I'm calm right now and I can do what I say.
Do any of you use these tools at home or have taught your parents or siblings?
At home when my siblings get really annoyed, um I like to go walk away and take mindful breaths and that helps me calm down. And then once I'm done, I go back downstairs and and I'm more calm so I can handle what's happening better.
It helps parents too. Yeah. Helps everyone. So I would like to, oh, are you going to say one more thing? Okay.
So I I have a connection with Maggie because I also have a sibling um and she annoys me a lot. I just take some um deep breaths um and then I feel better and sometimes I just walk away to go and do something else.
Very wise. Good. So I would just like to share a few things. First of all, when I was your age, I found myself in some difficult situations with my siblings, but now that I'm older, they are like my best friends. So there is a light at the end of the tunnel, okay? But I I'd like to thank um you for sharing the three critical elements of our SCL program and what the wider district is not aware of yet is that growth mindset and mindfulness will be a part of our K-12 curriculum next year and you're already engaged in that work um in fourth grade and I'm so happy about that. And now we also are aware, most of our families, is that Ruler is is rolled out K through 12. So um I'm really happy that you you were able to share with the board the major aspects of those three social emotional curricular efforts that are underway in our district. So I want to thank you for that. I want to thank Mrs. O'Leary and Mr. Cooper for having our first graders and our fourth graders speak with us tonight and and faculty for being here and of course our families. So thank you so much. It just brings great joy to us. We'll take a two-minute break so people can head on out and we can transition to our next presentation. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Alright, so um I'd like to continue this superintendent's report and um this is the part of our evening where we're going to talk about um the special education testing process review that was conducted on behalf of the board by Dr. McGuffick. And before we start, I just want to talk a little bit about how we got to this place. So um during the fall semester, a couple of parents con- articulate some concerns around testing, the educational testing that um is used in our CSE meetings to articulate progress um for our students and you know, just some concerns around the integrity of that process. And so in speaking with the Board of Education regarding those concerns, we thought it would be helpful if we had an outside expert come in and review um our educational testing process and make um appropriate recommendations applicable. So um we had targeted having this meeting um at the start of the spring semester. So here we are tonight. So I'd like to welcome Dr. McGuffick and I'd like to thank her and Dr. Peace in advance for the amount of time and 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 um energy they have spent in the district over the course of several months um to get us to the point tonight where we can make some, I think, very strong recommendations on how to move forward um as a result of their experience with our families, with our um with our faculty, with our staff, and with the documents that were reviewed uh as a part of this analysis. So, Dr. McGuffick.
Um, good evening. Uh, can everybody hear me okay? Um, first of all, I want to thank the board and um the administration, parents, staff, um everybody who participated in this process for your time and for your forthcoming um forthcomingness with the process. Um, I have to say I have uh two doctorates from Columbia and I have never been so intimidated by an opening act prior to me speaking. I thought your students were amazing. That was just such a creative um way of of introducing um curriculum. So um hats off. Um anyway, I hope I can uh hold up to their the high standard that they set. So a little bit about my background, um I have um in I am a um neuropsychologist, a clinical psychologist, a superintendent. Um, I previously was um an assistant superintendent um in charge of educational services in the Pleasantville School District. I have been a CSE chairperson, CSE director, um school psychologist, and a special education teacher. So I I love this work um and I I'm honored um to be referred to as an expert in this area. So um as Christine mentioned, um there was a question about um a hat whether um standardized testing was appropriately administered and scored by teachers um in accordance with best practice and it was specifically the educational um test battery that was in question and and raised um some parents raised concerns about. So the process was actually very comprehensive. Um, I conducted and was part of um with Dr. Peace many interviews and focus groups, um then went on to um do a document and protocol review, followed by a data analysis, um and then um I'll be talking about some recommendations. So that's an overview of of what I'm going to be talking about tonight. With regard to the uh interviews and focus groups, I um spoke with administrators, the Board of Education. Um, I attended the special education education assessment panel presentation, spoke with PTA leadership, special education teachers um across all levels, psychologists in the elementary and um secondary schools, PPS leadership, um the director of literacy as well as um individual parents um who requested to meet with me. The document review um involved um randomly selected um protocols from students who were found ineligible, students who were classified, um as well as other selected protocols um that were based on parent feedback or parent concerns. And what I reviewed was the original protocols. Um, I rescored them, compared my results with the computer generated score reports that I was provided with by the school, compared the score reports with the evaluative reports that parents are given um at CSE meetings. And um there were also a few correspondence from parents um that were shared with me from the select group of um parent concerns. So I just want to go a little bit into the CSE decision-making process and um really drive home the point that decisions are made in a CSE meeting using multiple data points and those data points come from a psychological evaluation, um the educational evaluation, sometimes a speech language, and an occupational therapy. So there should be a number of tests that are administered. Additionally, there is a social history, a classroom observation, um teacher feedback, grades, and when applicable, response to intervention um data or feedback. So really no CSE decision um should be made based on a single score. And when a score is spuriously high or low, it should stand out um in comparison to some of this other feedback and uh data. So what I found was that the majority of the protocols had no material errors. However, there were material errors identified in two of the seventeen protocols that were analyzed. And a material error is an error that which may or may not have impacted the CSE um decision because I can't determine based on just one score again what that CSE decision should have been, but the error was um sort of stood out enough that it was of concern. There were very minor calculation errors and I would say even like counting errors where somebody would um a a single um question would be scored a one and somebody skipped it and counting up the number of ones. Um, those errors had no impact, no on the standards for certainly no um significant impact. And there was definitely no pattern of errors that were identified. Some errors were in the sort of higher direction, some in the lower direction. Um, and there was no evidence of any intentional misrepresentation of um student performance. Um, so the recommendations from this review was really obviously professional development on the administration and scoring of standardized tests because obviously the goal is we really don't um want errors, particularly material errors and and material errors that are related to somebody essentially um administering the uh one or two sub-tests incorrectly. The other recommendation is greater oversight, some degree of oversight for these teacher-administered um tests just to make sure that even the minor errors are, you know, not acceptable and are caught are caught as much as possible. Another thing that came out of the process was the fact that um it was sometimes difficult to find certain protocols in that we needed to sort of relook at the record retention procedures specifically for um the educational testing, which sometimes moves from special ed special special ed teacher to special ed teacher over the year. So that is a procedure that needs to be standardized. And um another recommendation was really for a comprehensive review or analysis um of the um special education program here um in in Chappaqua. Based on um the feedback from the focus groups and from the interviews, everybody was very forthcoming and um had some uh very important information and good information. forthcoming and had some very important information and good information to share. So, those are my recommendations.
So, maybe, so thank you. So, what we felt would be helpful is if we talk about the district's action plan as a result of those recommendations, and then we could take questions and comments from the board. Is that okay? All right, so, first of all, I want to talk a little bit about what our PPS departmental structure looks like today. So, currently, myself and Adam oversee Dr. McCarthy, who's the Director of People Personnel Services. And we have two administrators who are CSE chairpersons. We have Liz Wright and Kristi Evers. And then we have a psychologist that we've contracted with who oversees our 504 process primarily for the secondary students. And then we have our PPS staff that Heidi has oversight for, our guidance counselors, our nurses, and our OT or PT or speech staff, and our clinicians, those are our social workers, and other staff that provide counseling services. So, as you, as the community knows, Heidi has announced her retirement, and Liz is taking a new position on in a different district. We wish them both well. And this has given us the opportunity to think about our structure. And based on our feedback through this process and previous experiences, myself as someone who ran a people personnel department for a number of years, and Adam and Tony's experience in different districts, and their lens into what special education looked like in their districts and how it was structured, we're recommending this as a pathway forward for the district. So, we already know, and the district, the board has already approved us moving forward with hiring an assistant superintendent for people personnel services. And Tony will talk a little bit later about where we are in that process. But tonight, I'm recommending to you that we elevate Kristi Evers to the Director of Special Education and 504 Services in our district. And then we hire three school psychologists to oversee the CSE process for our district, which would include our 504 students moving forward into next year. And then the assistant superintendent for people personnel services would also continue to have oversight in the other areas of PPS, including our guidance counselors, nurses, and our support staff. So, one of the, so there are a few thoughts behind this new structure that I'd like to share with you, and then we can talk about it further during the Q and A period for the board. The first is, we're basically adding a staff member and a half to the department. One of the concerns that we repeatedly have heard, not only through this process, but since I've been here, is that families are feeling that they need more communication, more support from us as they engage in the CSE process, or as they're going through the CSE process, or even the school year, and things happen with their kids. So, this will allow us to have more opportunities for our staff to spend additional time with their families, because there will be more people in place to be able to have meaningful conversations and to support our parents more so than in our current structure. And we're able to leverage Kristi in a way to support the instructional program very differently, because we have chairpeople. So, she'll be able to support the teachers and the administrators in terms of the curricular support within our special education program. And we also, when we have situations that become more complicated, and maybe we need another level of CSE support, we'd be able to leverage both Kristi and the new assistant superintendent to support our families in that way. Again, this brings the 504 back into the district fold, which is absolutely what we needed to do moving forward. And we're very grateful for Dr. DeLassio's support over the course of two years, but we always had known that we needed to transition that back into the districts. And then, of course, the assistant superintendent allows us to have a cabinet-level position, a part of our team here, to keep PPS at the forefront of all decisions that we make in terms of how we're going to support students in this district. So, I personally worked under a structure very similar to this, and I knew that adding a psychologist to the CSE process was very helpful, not only for the families, but for the staff, to have an additional test expert on the committee with a completely different lens than an administrator. And I think that this is a strong pathway forward to begin to address some of the concerns that have been expressed over time, at least over the past three years, from our families and from our faculty, and how we could do a better job at supporting everyone who's working within the PPS program, which would in turn translate to better support for our kids. So, now I'd like Adam to talk about some other action steps that the district is planning to take based on feedback received throughout this process.
Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking Dr. McGuffick for her professionalism and partnership through the whole process. We appreciate the sensitivity to which you approached this important work. I'd also like to thank the parents and teachers, our clinicians and administrators and teachers who participated in this work all the way through. It was complex work, but their cooperation really helped us identify areas that we would need to move forward with. So, we've already taken some steps, and we plan to take some steps with regard to Dr. McGuffick's recommendations. So, I'd like to go through those now, if I could. The first one includes this educational testing protocol, records retention procedures. We've already put new procedures in place where educational testing protocols and other records will be stored in the building in a centralized, secure location accessible by the administrators for 12 months. And that will be a consistent procedure across the district. So, we've already communicated that with our administrators, and we'll be communicating that in writing to our staff very soon. So, that will take care of that one recommendation that's already been made. And we've also got professional development planned on the administration of these educational testing protocols for our special education teachers. That will happen on our, the first day of that will happen on our superintendent conference day scheduled for 3:13, where we're bringing in an outside expert to train our teachers in the Woodcock-Johnson Fourth Edition as a starting point. And we'll continue to focus on that professional development to make sure that those assessments are administered with fidelity and scored appropriately. We also have, we're going to be making some changes through the spring of who chairs the CSE meetings. We will no longer have teachers chair CSE meetings through the spring. We're going to rely on our administrators and our psychologists to do the chairing of those CSE meetings. We understand that that's going to require some changes and some paperwork that has already been sent out with regard to notification, and we'll be doing that. We also have a step that we're going to add, where we're going to ask our school psychologists to make sure that they review those teacher educational testing protocols before the CSE meeting. So, the psychologists have a whole additional level of testing training above and beyond what typical special education teachers get. So, this will add a checkpoint to make sure that those protocols are accurate before the CSE meetings happen. And we're also going to be instituting a spot check of teacher educational testing that'll happen periodically throughout the spring and into the summer to make sure that our professional development that we've provided and new attention that we've paid to this is really paying off with regard to the accuracy of these protocols. So, I want to transition a little bit to this idea of creating a strategic plan for the PPS department, is a period of leadership transition, and we want to take advantage of that, and also take advantage of some of the feedback that we got through this process, that Dr. McGuffick and I had the opportunity to meet with several parents and have some focus groups of teachers and clinicians and administrators, had some other individual administrator interviews. And everyone that we met with had some really good ideas and interesting ideas about how we may be able to improve various aspects of the department. And many of those suggestions were beyond the scope of what Dr. McGuffick was looking at more specifically, but I think they're really important nonetheless. And the steps that we had developed to review and answer that specific question did not allow us to fully engage and explore all of those suggestions that were shared with us. So, what we would like to do, and what we're recommending, is that we move forward with a full, comprehensive review that we go through, or launch a request-for-proposal process, so that we can open up a search for an outside consulting group or agency that would, that has experience with this kind of work, that could come in and do a full, comprehensive review of our special education department, and have the opportunity to engage our community and our school community in a variety of focus groups and interviews and surveys and the things that they would typically do, looking at our documents, looking at our procedures, and reviewing how we allocate our staff, our continuum of services, et cetera, and really help us work kind of part and parcel with the new assistant superintendent with their entry plan to make sure that we have a good, solid, strategic plan going forward. So, I have a proposed timeline of how that might happen. First step would obviously be that we would put together a request for proposal, request for proposals for outside agencies to come in and potentially do that review for us. I think it will help us with our leadership transition and also give us a good strategic plan for moving forward.
All right, so, that's our presentation. I'd like to thank Adam and Carolyn for all of their work that they've done over the course of the past six months to get us to this point tonight. We're open to questions. We're open to your feedback. These are our suggested pathways forward, but of course, we can make adjustments based on, based on your input, so.
We've really been kept apprised of this throughout, and I know everyone may have some comments. I don't really have questions, because I feel like we've been a part of this altogether throughout this entire process. I do have a few comments, which is that there really was a common goal here, and that was to make sure that all the families were heard, that we looked thoroughly at anything they were concerned about, and the district was committed to getting a comprehensive review here. And so, even though Dr. McGuffick's review had a certain scope, we took all the feedback. We took letters to the board, we shared information, parents came in, shared everything. And there was a real commitment that we saw as a board on behalf of the administration and Dr. McGuffick, to make as many recommendations as possible, so that we have consistent practices, we have best practices, and that all of our students are getting the services that they need. So, I personally, I'm very pleased with this. I feel like it's extremely thorough. I think we're going to continue on this. I think that, I know personally that so many hours were spent on this to make sure that it was done properly. And I think that the plan now, in terms of the new structure, is very much, it's a win-win. It's a win for the families here. This structure, I think, is going to be incredibly helpful to make sure that they are supported throughout this whole process. And it's a win for the administration, because I think the structure will help everything run more smoothly. So, I'm very pleased. I think the RFP is a great idea, and I know that the work is continuing, but I think it's been a great process. So, those are my comments for now, so.
Well, I just want to thank Dr. McGuffick for your work and your expertise. Really appreciate it. And I thank you for your recommendations. I think that doing a comprehensive review is a very good recommendation. I like that the CSE chairs will now be psychologists. The new structure is, I think, a good one. It's very thorough, and I think it will serve us well. And I think that I don't have that much more to say, because this is still an ongoing process, but ultimately, I would like to say, I would like to thank the parent community. I'd like to thank the people I spoke to and others for coming forward. I've learned that, you know, in my time in this district, starting from when I was PTA president through my nine-year on the boards, that community engagement is what keeps us strong and makes us better. So, I want to thank you all for engaging with us in this process. We appreciate the partnership with the community. So, thank you for the work, and this is continuing as a work in progress. Thank you.
So, thank you, Dr. McGuffick. I have one question for Tony. Where do we stand with the process regarding the hiring of our new personnel?
Sure. So, we have partnered with HYA, a search firm, to be part of this, because it is a critical priority for us as a district in looking forward. So, we actually met with Representative Debbie Raisus today, who facilitated the focus groups in district about two or three weeks ago, and used all the information that she gathered through that process to inform her perspective and consider different candidates. So, she met with us today and presented us with a slate of candidates. And the interview process will begin after the break, and there'll be several rounds of interviews, including a small committee interview with the district leadership team, broader committee interview with a cross-section of key stakeholders, site visit here, and then a site visit to finalists or two, when we get to that point. Our goal, our hope, is to offer a recommendation to the board at the March 18th board meeting.
Thank you very much. Second thing, I just want to piggyback off of Jean, I think he said, thank you to everyone who participated, community as well as faculty, board members, administration. I like the new organization you have, and I think it's going to help with the whole CSE process, but I think it also helps, which we haven't really focused on, I think it helps all the students, because it's going to give the counselors and the clinicians more time to work with those students under CSE, as well as other students as well. So, I think it's going to help our district in the long run, across the board. So, thank you very much for that thoughtful organization.
I also wanted to just, you know, thank everybody involved, both up here and in the audience, as it were, and to say that I think we've got a really good plan moving forward. And part of that plan came from parents in the community being willing to be so open and honest about their experiences with the special education system in the district. And so, as we move forward through this process, I just, you know, hope that you will continue to do so and help us collectively keep moving in the right direction.
All right, so, everything's been said, but I'm going to say it again, because a lot of it does bear repeating. Thank you to the administration and the staff for being so open in all of these conversations, to letting us take a look and listening to the feedback of our community. And I really thank the community for being so open and willing to share. I know that it's not always that easy to talk about some of the experiences you have, especially when you may not feel that it was positive. So, I really appreciate that, and I hope you will stay engaged as we move forward. I'm very confident that we are moving in a direction of continuing to do the best for all of our kids here. And I really do look forward to continuing to see the evolution of the planning process and the implementation of the new structure. And on a personal note, I will personally get to experience a lot of these changes as well, so, thank you.
Okay, so, I guess I would just like to say in conclusion, we recognize that there are concerns from our community around how we're supporting our students with the most needs. And I would, I feel as if we decided to stop tonight with this, with Carolyn's initial report, we wouldn't be addressing the overarching concerns that I think were initially present that got us to the place where we thought we needed to have a focused review. So, I'm looking forward to having an outside consultant firm that you will select through this process to really help guide the district in making the best decisions we can for all of our kids, but especially for our kids who need the most support. So, you have my word that we will engage in a fully transparent process and make the necessary adjustments to ensure we're supporting our students exactly as they need to be supported, to receive the education that they deserve here in this district. So, I'm looking forward to this process taking place over the course of next year. And I want to thank Adam for leading it, really on behalf of the district. So, thank you again, Adam. We appreciate it, and thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you so much, Christine. Thank you, Christine and Adam. Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. McGuffick.
Thank you very much. So, can you?
John, can you pull up my superintendent's report?
So, one of the things I do want to talk about that's on the agenda, but it's not on my superintendent's report, is because we have a period between now and June where we'll be in a hiring process, we do have three interim chairs on the agenda to help support the annual review process that are recommended for approval tonight. So, we will have extra experienced CSE chairs helping support the district through this transition period, in addition to our administrators and our current staff at chair meetings. So, I did want to share that. So, just a few other pieces of information I'd like to share with the community tonight. First, I want to remind everyone, because this is coming quickly, that we have our Igen presenter, Dr. Jean Twinge, who'll be in the district on March 11th, and she'll be hosting a session at 7:00 at night. She has written a fascinating book about this particular generation and 10 characteristics of this generation that are different than previous generations, that she links to iPhone usage. So, I really would encourage our families to attend, and we'll send out another notification after break. On the agenda tonight, you'll see there's a professional development for our secondary social studies teachers. And this is around helping our teachers have the skills necessary to the skills necessary to facilitate discussions around sensitive issues in, in history and in current events. And we've worked with this organization before, so we're really happy to have them come back and, and, and help support our teachers as they create classrooms where kids can have open dialogue about sensitive issues in safe spaces. Adam, did you want to just briefly touch on our APPR resolution?
Yeah, so APPR stands for Annual Professional Performance Review. It's a state regulation. Every district is required to submit their APPR plan, and in their APPR plan, they have details with regard to how we evaluate teachers and how we evaluate administrators. And so we've worked over the last couple of months, we've worked with the Chapacua Teachers, the CCT, as well as the Administrative Association, to make some revisions to our plan, which we'd like to submit with the board's approval, submit to Albany, which really is going to make things a little bit more efficient for us with the plan, also save us some instructional time back in the classrooms. So we think it's adjustments that will really help improve what we need to do with regard to that requirement at the state level.
Tony, I know you already updated us on the assistant superintendent. Would you like to update us on Bell, please?
Sure. I did want to add, though, in our conversation with Debbie today from HYA, she was so excited to share that the pool, the candidate pool that she had to consider for the assistant superintendent position was one of the strongest polls that she has seen. And she's been engaged in more and more PPS searches, and so she was really impressed with the candidate pool, so we're excited to meet that slate of candidates in the coming weeks. The process for Bell Middle School is going to be somewhat similar in terms of structure, but the window for applications for that position closes on Friday. We will start resume review and then small screening interviews. I facilitated focus groups at Bell a couple of weeks ago, and it was great. Also went back the following weekend, got to hear from some of the kids about what they felt that we needed to be thinking about in a new principal and, and priorities that we needed to be thinking about. So it's really been informative for me and has certainly shaped what we will be looking at in the process. Our goal there for the Bell principal position is to hopefully have a recommendation for the board at the April board meeting, I think maybe April 15th, that might be the date. And so we're excited. These processes will be unfolding pretty much at a parallel pace, so, yeah.
All right, so I just, I wanted to highlight that the Chapacua Schools Foundation has a, has awarded the district a $50,000 grant to support the design process for our new plant sciences and bioclimatic research center here at Greeley. So I just want to thank them for their continued partnership as we look forward to the future of what research facilities look like in this district. So I just want to acknowledge that, and I'd like Adam to talk about the other Instagrams that are on the agenda.
Yeah, we have four great Instagrams. I had trouble squeezing them all onto one slide. We have, from Bell, we have our music teachers that have submitted an Instagram for Latin percussion instruments, so they want to have the students have an opportunity to play some of those instruments in their band, which is a really neat Instagram. So those will be going to Bell, compliments to CSF. And we've got a really exciting grant from the 10th grade English and Social Studies teachers, who are going to collaborate on a project that's going to be an in-school field trip for 10th graders where they will read the novel Night. Novel Night is about the Holocaust and World War II. It's a really powerful novel that high school kids have been reading for quite a long time, but we actually, in order to do this, it's a in-house field trip for all 10th graders to read this novel basically in a day altogether, and so we need many more copies than we have. We have kind of a couple of class sets that we rotate around, so CSF is generously donating those. So the 10th graders are going to participate in a series of activities, and we're going to use our new L-building space, which is going to be terrific, and it's nice to see the English and Social Studies departments working together on that interdisciplinary project, which was part of the vision for that space originally. So this is great that the CSF is helping us out with that. And we've got a, a nice grant from the English teacher, the sixth grade English teachers over at Bell. There's a book called Go Be Kind, which is basically a book about gentlemen who went out on adventures around the world to spread kindness. And so I'll pass it down the, down the road if you haven't seen it yet, but this is to get some copies for our sixth graders over at Bell to read through that. And then the last grant comes from West Orchard, where the teachers want to start to experiment with math stackers. Math stackers are blocks that are of different sizes, so the students, you can see kind of how the eight and two add up to the same height as the six and four, so students can start to stack these blocks and visually represent the size of these numbers, so they get kind of the conceptual connections of the size of the numbers and how you combine those numbers to make things of the same value, like all those things add up to 10. So it goes really well with our math program, but it's not a manipulative that we've used in the past. So the CSF, as they've done so many times in the past, they're going to fund a pilot of that, and if we like it, we'll be able to scale it into our other schools. We think it's a really neat opportunity for our kids to use some conceptual math, those manipulatives called math stackers. So thanks to the CSF for these four Instagrams. They're really exciting, and they touch, touch a lot of kids throughout the whole district, so thank you.
I just want to remind the district that we're on winter break next week. Not that many of the, our parents need to, need a reminder of that, but the district is closed on Monday, but we're open Thursday, Tuesday through Friday. So if people have some school business, last minute issues that they have, need assistance with, the building will be open, the buildings will be open Tuesday through Friday of next week. And then my, my last thank you slide would be just showing you that our, our new chorus teacher at the, at the high school, David Catalongo, invited the eighth graders up from Southern Bridges in Bell and had a, had a night where they all sung together, and I really appreciated his initiative. I mean, he's, he's been a fantastic addition to the staff, so I'm really pleased to have him here. So that's the end of the superintendent's report, so thank you.
Can I just say something, Christine? I just want to say, CSF liaison, I, I would like to thank CSF for, for all of their grants. And I just want to say, you really glossed over the Plant Science and Bioclimatic Center. I just want everyone to know, I mean, how this was a result of Christine's really forward-thinking and amazingly creative mind. It's really groundbreaking work, and no other secondary school has this. This is, the only colleges have something like this. And if we can accomplish it, our kids will be so, so fortunate. And when we had to look at examples of that, we had to go to colleges to take a look. So I just want everyone to know what incredible work our administration is doing, and that we're very fortunate, we're very lucky that we have the resources to do this, because there are schools out there that don't even have libraries. So, you know, we're very fortunate and very thankful, and thank you for your leadership and continuing the innovation in our district.
Well, fortunate, I have foresight to go ahead and do this, so thank you.
And it's something that, being mindful of equity around the, the region, that we, we're going to be sort of opening it up and sharing with others. So, thank you for that.
Okay, we're moving on to committee reports. I can briefly state, I know that Holly and I, we had a communications committee meeting on Tuesday, January 28th. There's nothing major to report other than we were talking with our new communications consultant, Courtney Walker, just about general, you know, messaging and getting that out. We actually had known about Christine's article, and we're discussing that, and just discussing ways that when we do have information to send out to the community, how to send that out in the most effective way possible. So that's what we were continuing talking about, also talking about, a little bit about our discussion, which we've had on multiple occasions, about connecting with the community, whether it's through office hours or some sort of coffees, et cetera. We are still trying to work that out amongst ourselves and our board members. We're continuing those conversations, and we will report back on that. Do you have anything else to add?
No, I think you've covered it.
Okay. Facilities?
Facilities. Holly and I went through the library with John and Joe Gromundo. We know there's a leak in there, which we want to take a look at what the issues are going around regarding the construction projects, and we have to sit down and make some recommendations.
Okay. Is there anything else to report on?
No policy today.
Okay. Okay. So we can move on to the public comment period. I'm sure a lot of people here are already familiar with that, but for those of you who aren't, we do welcome public comments. It's not a question and answer, but it is commentary. We'd love you to come up to the mic. You can state your name. We ask, in the interest of time and in consideration for everyone else, that you limit your comment to three minutes. Anything else, if there's information you need to leave, et cetera, you can leave it with our district clerk. If there are questions you have, you can contact any one of the board members or the administration who can get back to you, hopefully with answers after the meeting. And after the public comment period, the board may or may not have a discussion regarding any topic that was brought up during the public comment. So does anyone have a comment this evening? You can step up to the mic and speak. Go right ahead. State your name clearly so we know we are.
I'm Stacy Science, and I was just going to comment on the fact that the retirement of Pat Pollock is a huge loss for the district. But I know that New York State does not mandate that nurses have to, you have to have a registered nurse in every school building, but I hope that our district continues to place a value on having a registered nurse and registered nurse substitutes in every building in our district.
Okay. Thank you, Stacy. Would anyone else like to come up and comment? Just pull the, you could just pull it up. Yeah, there you go.
So I, I just have a comment about-
Oh, can you state your name for everyone? Do you mind? Sorry.
Connie Whitehouse.
Okay.
I have a comment about Dr. McGuffin's presentation, just thinking about the numbers. So I'm a market researcher by trade, and I know 17 is probably not close to a representative sample, but if we have two errors, material errors in 17 evaluations, take aside that's probably not a representative sample for second, that's 12%. If we have 300 IEPs, I don't know how many evaluations were done where students were found ineligible. We potentially have dozens of students out there with incorrect evaluations, which is the basis of the whole IEP plan. So I would hope that there would be some thought to finding those kids and remediating for those kids that are out there with potentially incorrect diagnoses.
Okay. If I could, just everyone, if, if I could just state, and I understand that you, you may want to applaud things, but we ask, just in the interest of everything, we, we ask that you hold your applause. It's not typically done at the meeting, so we, we understand, but we'd appreciate that, so we can go on with the meeting. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to come up and speak?
My name is Jennifer Bancroft, and I have a question. And it's actually, could I ask, could you put the slide back up of the proposed PPS organization?
John, it's, this is not a, this is not a question and answer.
Perhaps it's not, but my question is, I just thought maybe with the visual, perhaps that's not appropriate, but I believe, and I don't have it in front of me, so I don't want to speak without having it in front of me, but now it actually is. So it will be the superintendent to the assistant superintendent PPS, the director of the 504 and the S, the CSE, and then to the side is the PPS staff, which will include counselors, nurses, OTPT, speech, and clinicians. So I'm very used to the United States of America, where you have a system of checks and balances. With this, I, I don't see if a counselor sees something wrong, are they very freely able to go to their boss and speak out against the SE, the SCE chairperson and the director of special ed? I, I don't see where the checks and balances is for a whistleblower in all of the positions that oversee all of what a child who is considered a child of special education is. And I just ask the board to ask if having all of these positions, reporting under one person, and having perhaps somebody seeing that something isn't done with fidelity, and they have the ability to speak out against their employer and their direct supervisor, is possible for them with this setup, which is very different from what we had before and looks very nice with this graph, but I don't see any outside audit capacity to this model. It's just a thought. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Yvonne Dunn, and I'd like the Board of Ed to consider the checks and balances in regards to the types of scoring programs that we are running. Are we running legacy programs, and if we are, why? And where are the checks and balances in looking at how score reports and what programs are being used with regard to various scoring programs? It wasn't mentioned. It wasn't part of the review, and I think that's something that seriously should be considered.
Thank you.
Karen Basic. I have a question, sorry to hold this, in regards to the hiring practices, because I was invited, as many parents were, to a session by a hiring firm for this position, I assume, and I was rather surprised that the response by the person running it was, "I don't know about special ed. I'm here for you to tell me about it." Considering that we've had this review and that there have been lots of issues over the years, how is someone checking to see that the person who's going to be hired actually has knowledge about that position? Because the firm was just sort of getting questions and asking, and she didn't seem to have any knowledge about laws, which are important.
Okay, thank you for your feedback. Anyone else?
Can we have a brief discussion? There's a couple of things I just want to follow up on right now.
Sure.
That's okay. So first, that's fine. I know this doesn't answer, I'm not answering Jennifer's question, but I do, I would like to just point out, we do have a whistleblower policy, 90-60, but one of us will follow up with her regarding her specific concerns. But I did want to point that out for the community. We do have a policy in place for, for faculty or staff that feel like something is not happening that should be, and we have a procedure. So I also, I would like to thank the additional feedback we received regarding what the possible RFP should look like and include. We'll take that under consideration. And then Karen, Dr. Sinanis will get back in touch with you regarding your questions regarding the search process. So if you need to leave early, he'll contact you. We have your name, and he'll be able to answer your questions. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, approvals and ratifications. I'd like to take items 3.1 through 3.3 together. They are approving the, and accepting the minutes from the January 22nd, 2020 board meeting, the January 29th, I forgot to put my glasses on, excuse me, 2020 special board meeting, and the February 7th, 2020 special board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve items 3.1 through 3.3?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Aye. Item 3.4, be it resolved that the Board of Education adopts the 2020 to 2021 school calendar. I know we will be having a discussion, but let me get a motion to approve the calendar as submitted. Can I have a motion?
I move.
I will second. I would ask any questions or comments, but I know that, given the discussions that have gone on about the calendar and the comments that the board has received, that I think it's important, before we move on to vote for this, that the board members get to speak to their opinions on this. So we, we've decided that we're going to go down and, and start at Warren, and let the board members discuss their thoughts on the calendar this year. So Warren?
So we received a number of requests to move the start date of the school calendar after Labor Day. We always appreciate when community members provide input. Regarding the calendar, the board does not develop the calendar. Some people thought that we did. The calendar is developed by the superintendent and our educational experts, and we rely on them. It's based on educational and curricular needs for the best of all the students in the district. I know that the calendar was developed with a lot of input from various groups within the district and outside within the community. I fully support our administration in the calendar that has been proposed and encourage adopting the calendar as is.
Okay.
I'm done for now.
Okay. So what was presented to us for consideration and ultimately for approval and adoption was a draft calendar. And as the word draft implies, it can be changed, and the fact that we as a board have to approve it implies that we should give our feedback. So I'm glad that we've had the opportunity to do so. We welcome also feedback from the community on the draft calendar. The overwhelming majority of the feedback we've gotten as a board is that the parents want the calendar changed to reflect a shorter Christmas break and to start after Labor Day, consistent with almost all of the districts in the area. Regardless of whether we ultimately approve the draft calendar tonight as proposed or not, I think we need to acknowledge and consider that feedback. And as with anything, there will be people for and against whatever decision we make, and it's possibly true that the people who are against something will- and it's possibly true that the people who are against something will always be more vocal. Either way, I want to just recognize that Dr. Ackerman is doing her absolute best to balance the needs of the community and put the kids first. I just want to make sure that we're balancing the needs of all the kids and all of the constituents of our school community, and I believe that the parents are an integral part of that. And what I've personally been hearing a lot, which may or may not reflect what other members of the board are hearing, is that the two-week break was hard for elementary school students this year in terms of getting them back into the routine of school in January, and that it was hard for the parents of younger children in terms of needing to take that much time at once from work or find alternate coverage, which can be very hard. And with this particular calendar, I think it might be particularly hard to find coverage because, given that most of the area districts will be open that week, there probably won't be the sort of vacation camps that will sometimes pop up to fill the gap. Dr. Ackerman has many valid and well-thought-out reasons why she drafted the calendar the way she did, and I don't mean to be dismissive of those in any way. I just think it's worth also considering the other issues that have been raised in response to the proposed calendar, especially in light of the fact that almost all of our local and similarly situated districts have elected to start after Labor Day and have only the 11-day Christmas break.
Okay, so I'm not going to repeat a lot of what Hillary said, but we have received a lot of comments from parents, a lot from elementary school students, and, you know, we thank you for your comment and feedback. We've taken it very seriously. I know what it's like to have a child at home for a long period of time. That does not like to be at home, not being in school and doing such things. I also know what it's like to have kids in high school who are experiencing a lot of stress. I've experienced both sides of the issues, but I would like to let the community know that we've taken all the feedback into serious consideration, and I appreciate all the reasons that people have for wanting to start school after Labor Day. I also know that Dr. Ackerman and the administration engaged in a serious process. They engaged stakeholders, faculty, students, and the PTA. There was a process with stakeholder feedback to build a calendar, so I feel confident for myself that I've heard both sides and have taken both sides into account.
So at the last meeting, we were shown a draft calendar, and since then, I think we've heard a lot of feedback as well as gotten some additional information about what some of our neighboring districts have opted to do in regard to the Labor Day start, which leads to the length of time left for break in December. Most of what I have personally heard has been from parents in favor of a post-Labor Day start with a shorter two-week break. That said, I know that there are considerations, in particular at the high school level, that drive a preference for a longer break there. However, given some of this new information, I just wanted to ask a few questions that I'm hoping you can address, because I do want to make sure that we have had a thorough consideration of all the sides and what's best for all of the students. So do you mind if I just run through my questions, let you go back?
Yeah.
So first is, how have you considered the context with the start time for the neighboring districts? And we'd be a regional outlier, and are there any risks or benefits to that? Do you want me to keep going?
No, let me just answer that question. So the calendar of our neighboring districts doesn't impact the calendar of our district. So there's no benefit or risk to aligning our calendar to any neighboring district. It doesn't serve us any purpose. Sometimes in other districts where they have a large amount of students who rely on Bosse's for services, it makes sense for calendar alignment to happen, but even in our district, for students who attend other schools placed by us, we transport them on days when we're not in attendance and those schools are open.
And given the feedback we've heard from the community over the last few weeks, and are you confident that this is the best calendar for all students and is not overweighting the perceived need of the high school?
So I would share that during the process that we used to develop the calendar, the concerns raised by parents regarding the transition back from winter break to school was not reflected in the feedback received from the administrators and teachers at the elementary level. So I stand by the calendar that I presented to you based on the feedback received during the process.
Okay. And then I think my last question is probably more of a comment, but given that we think that the longer break is a benefit to the high school students and in particular the seniors, are we looking at some other ways to make sure that those things are addressed? Because while you can take those, that extended break this year, that's not always an option, so just-
So I think, I know you're making a comment, but there's kind of a question in there, so I'm going to take an opportunity to talk a little bit. So we're very concerned about the stress levels expressed by our secondary students. And I had done randomized focus groups starting in grade seven, and even our students at the seventh grade level expressed stress around their academics. And where that stress comes from are multiple places. When they talk about the school, they speak about logistics. When they talk about home, they talk about academic press associated with doing extraordinarily well to get into competitive colleges. When they talk about each other, they talk about grade shaming and pressure they place on each other to outperform their peers. So when we think about social-emotional learning in this district, all of that weighs heavily in the decision-making process that we're engaged in to try to address the pressure and stress that our kids are expressing. This is one small way of trying to address some of that pressure kids are expressing that they're experiencing as students in this district, which again is coming from multiple places. It's not coming specifically from the school, it's not coming specifically from home, it's not coming specifically from their peers. It's coming from all of that together, and I feel a responsibility that if we can, if we have the opportunity to build, even if it's just the calendar, but to build a calendar that takes a small step in trying to alleviate some of that pressure, then it's my responsibility to present that to you today, and that's what really drove this decision-making process for me. But that doesn't mean there are conversations consistently happening and how can we over, how can we address how kids are feeling and help them through this pressure that they're expressing, rarely happening within the context of this district. I have a focus group of students that I work with to gain some insight and things that we can do as a district to address what they're sharing with us that a majority of our students are experiencing here as students, really. So for all the wonderful things that we have in this district, we still have our own work that we can do around issues, particularly around stress, so.
Thank you, that's-
Can I add a question about the days?
Sorry, I'm sorry, but that's, public comment period is over, so if you have a question, please, please send it to us, but just perhaps email it to us at this time. Thank you so much, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I just wanted to thank you for being so thoughtful and broad in your analysis of the options and what you've presented, so thank you.
So I will just add that as board members, we try and figure out what's our role in balancing all of this. We wish we could make everyone happy, this is one of those situations where I know we've discussed among ourselves, someone will walk away not happy with this, and that's unfortunate, but we all know that's a part of it. But we have all taken our roles very seriously here and taken the feedback seriously. Who's ever written to us and gotten a note that we are taking the feedback into consideration, I can tell you that every board member here took that feedback into consideration. I don't, and we all maybe did it a little differently and focused on different things, but everyone was very committed to looking into this very seriously to make sure that concerns of the community members were represented here. The flip side is that, that as board members, our job is one of oversight. We are not administrators, we're not calendar experts, and I did want the community to know, we did get some feedback that we had perhaps changed the start date or changed something or done something out of the ordinary or didn't inform the community about that, and I really did want to assure everyone that the process for this calendar was the same as it's been every year. So I wanted everyone to know that nothing unusual was done. This is a typical process where the administration comes up with the calendar, it's usually introduced in January of every year, sometimes January or February, and that the administrators did this year what they always do, they talked to stakeholders, they discussed among themselves. I know, I believe Christine even talked to neighboring districts about this. Faculty, students, it was submitted to the PTA executive committee before it was introduced as a draft. So all of this goes into it, and I thank you for doing this because I don't know how the calendar gets read every year, I've been here for over 20 years, and it's not an easy thing. The way that I looked at it, and I really did understand people's concerns about the two-week break and working parents and having young kids at home, and that's a long break. And what I did is I started to look at numbers, and being here for such a long period of time, I really took a deep dive and went back and looked at all of our calendars. Maybe it's the lawyer in me that looks at precedent, but it's also the right thing to do as a board member, to look at what's been done in the past. And we, in terms of the two-week break, I went back to as far as 2013, 2014, and in those last seven years, we've had a two-week break four out of the seven years. So four times we've had the two-week break, three times we've had it differently, and that usually depends on which day Christmas and New Year's falls on. If it falls on a Wednesday or Thursday and it's the middle of the week, almost every district ends up with a two-week break. So even moving forward, as much as I very much am concerned with families, I know it's not easy in terms of coverage and time off and activities, but I don't think that's anything that will change down the road just by the nature of how calendars goes. And most public schools, at some point, every third year, every other year, they're going to have two weeks off because that's the way the calendar lands. I think the bigger issue then is the Labor Day start, for me, because that's the one that's more, the pre-Labor Day start, is more unusual. As it so happens, in 2015, 2016, we had the exact same dates here. Labor Day was late, it was September 7th. We started the week before, just like we're doing now. Christmas and New Year's fell on a Friday, we had two weeks off. It was the identical dates and timeframe, and we did the identical thing that this is being proposed this year. That's not saying we had to keep it that way, but I just, I just wanted people to understand that we really took a look at this to see, was this out of the ordinary, was this unusual? I know there are competing interests here, and I wanted everyone to know that we did hear it, but I feel my obligation as a board member is to look at everything, try and weigh it out, but also, we do have to give deference to the administrators who are taking all of this into consideration, probably in ways we don't even know, to come up with a calendar that they really felt was the best for the whole district. And I do know that they had very significant reasons for proposing this the way it is, but I really wanted to make it clear that I spent more time online looking at calendars, my personal calendar of remembering breaks from years past, and I think all of us really took a deep look into this to make sure that we were hearing all the competing interests and trying to weigh them appropriately. So that's all I wanted to say. Okay? Does anyone else have any comments? Okay, so I think we vote on the calendar. Item 3.4, calendar for 2020, 2021 school year, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay, anyone have votes? Okay, it's approved.
So we'll put this out, we're having a weekly update go out at the end of this week, so we'll put that in.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your support.
All right.
Okay, so I recommend 4.1 instructional, but I also want to recognize we have three major retirements on this agenda, and we'll celebrate Rita, Jerry, and Pat in June, and I'd like to thank them for their service, and we're sorry to see them go, but we're very happy for them as they move on with their, you know, the next portion of their lives, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for item 4.1.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for item 4.2 non-instructional.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item five, this is our consent agenda. I know that Adam and Christine already discussed a couple of items on here naming the diagrams. Our consent agenda does cover routine items and business matters that we move to approve in a single motion, so I would like to recommend all the items under item number five. Items 5.1 through 5.18, which is our consent agenda, can, I will move that we approve all the items in number five. May I have a second?
A second.
Oh.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Facilities. Item number 6.1, I would like to move that the board acknowledge a change order for the athletic field improvements at Bell Middle School. That's already been approved, we need to acknowledge that. I'll make a motion to acknowledge the change order in the amount of $1,848.
A second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item seven, financials. I'd like to take items 7.1 through 7.6. These are the treasurer's report for December 2019, the quarterly central treasurer's report for extra classroom activities accounts as of December 2019, the quarterly central treasurer's report for team accounts as of December 31, 2019, the revenue status report for January 2020, the appropriation status report for January 2020, and the treasurer's report for January 2020. Can I have a motion to approve items 7.1 through 7.6?
I move 7.1 through 7.6.
I'll second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Notice of future meetings, after the break, our next meeting is Tuesday, March 3rd, 7:30 p.m. We'll have a presentation from Bell Middle School students. We will also have a budget proposal, and our next meeting after that is Wednesday, March 18th, at 7:30 p.m. We will talk about the curriculum, technology, special ed, and athletics budget presentations, and that's all here in the academic comments, the comments, com, comments, excuse me. Can I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at 9:28?
I move that we adjourn the meeting at 9:28.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good job.